Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of August 1st, 2017. The first item on the agenda is a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion, will you approve the agenda?
I second that.
All in favor? And we have two sets of minutes to approve, July 18th and July 25th.
Make a motion, will you approve the 18th and July 25th?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Uh, next up is the Department Head Committee Chair Updates. We have road commissioners.
Yeah, I put them on there from your conversation last week or your instruction. Um, I did speak to both road commissioners. Um, they were unable to attend tonight's meeting and said that, uh, it had only been a week and they didn't have an update as of now.
Okay, I do, um, I do have deeds for each of the bridges. I'm not a deed reader, um, so we'll have somebody look at those and move forward with, um, finding out when the inspections are or have been done. I do have a New Hampshire-based inspection here, um, for Canal. Is that Canal?
So do you want me to forward that on to the road commissioners or is it something specific that you want me to do?
Um, I could certainly give them a copy of that. Um, I can't remember what their next step was after...
Determining, um, ownership?
Making sure...
Inspection and then engineering?
They wanted to make sure we had a survey for it and, you know, they want to know where the lines are.
Oh, and not to interrupt, but, um...
No, that's okay.
Yeah, we need you to talk more on the mic the last couple of minutes.
Close, sir, okay.
The last set of minutes, so we had to review. We couldn't hear you very well.
Oh, no.
Squeak the end, so you're closer.
I think this, if that's down a little lower...
Down better. Can you people hear me?
Yes.
Is that better? Everybody out there? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sorry. Anyways, um...
Lawyer, surveyor, and then the engineer.
So, are you intending on telling them that we don't need one or two of those steps with those deeds or...
I think with a deed, you don't need a survey. That costs a lot of money, doesn't it?
Right, but who's going to read those deeds and do that?
Well, we have an assessor that certainly can read the deeds. Do we know if the road commissioners have seen these at all or if they agree with them?
No, they haven't. I can, I can put a copy in their box.
Or we can email them.
Or, uh, scan and email, sure.
Yeah, 'cause then you have a trail of when and how. Okay, so we'll email it to them and then invite them back for next week?
Yeah, 'cause I think they really want to know where the lines are, so, I mean...
And I'm not sure, I mean, can I look at the deeds? I can read them.
There's one.
I'm just wondering how specific, are they the original?
There's a couple, um...
Those two are the Canal.
So this is what, the row?
Yes.
Okay, let me, um, so I'll scan and, I'll scan and email them to the road commissioners and also to Dennis and ask him to take a look and interpret them.
Yes.
And he'll look like they're pretty clear as far as boundaries.
Right.
And they're taking measurements. And I don't know if the guys have seen these or not, or, I mean, I'm guessing not based on their...
Well, they may have. There's been, I've got some old, uh, road committee minutes that it looks like there was like lots of progress going on, research for the bridges and moving forward and almost like getting the funding and applying for grants and then all of a sudden it stopped.
So we have minutes that they had already, they've already determined all of this?
Hmm, sounds like it, at least with Canal.
With these road commissioners or different road commissioners? Like, how long ago was it?
Well, it says at present, Act and Road Committee. We have David Winchell at a March 22nd, 2012. And I don't know who the other was.
It's a New Hampshire person.
Yeah, like I said, there's been some...
So what would you like me to do?
Gift them those.
Okay.
And invite them to next, the next meeting to see what they'd like, what they would like to do. It sounds like they'd like to be involved.
Yes.
We'll keep them involved.
I'll email them tomorrow morning.
Okay, next up, assessing update.
Yeah, so this is just kind of a, an FYI, something you don't really hear a lot about, but, um, so we are, um, getting ready to start talking about tax commitment again. Um, as you're aware, we're required to bill the owner and the property however it sits as of April 1st of each year. So if you unfortunately lose your house in a fire on April 2nd, the town has to tax it at, at full rate. That's based on main state statute. So, um, our assessor has gone through, so now that April 1st has come and gone, he's gone through and put all of the deeds in, we've gone through and they've, um, inspected the properties, we've gone through and double-checked all our 911 numbers. Um, we're going to take a pretty good hit this year because of the homestead exemption. You guys are aware of the drop there. But we have probably, so we went through and audited, they went through and audited all 3,000 accounts, we have 30, 100, 3200 accounts. And, I mean, it was a 500-page document, so unfortunately, these are picked out of it, but there's probably, there's one circled on maybe, I don't know, 20 pages here that has, um, some sort of issue in regards to, there's no, for example, this front one, there's no, um, building number on this road, but there's a building value, so it tells you there's a, you know, a number missing. So these are the ones that we need to go through and correct and find, but, um, by the time we fix these, we have all the new valuations in, so by this time next week, whenever the board's ready to start looking at the tax rate calculator, we're, uh, ready to commit taxes. Taxes.
I know, I'm a little scared.
The tax rate's going up?
Yep.
It has to. I mean, based on the, based on the homestead exemption being cut in half, based on the appropriations, um, approved, um, and based on, and this is not final, but there's some, we don't know what's going on with any money coming back from the school as far as undesigned it. You saw that email from Michelle.
Which they've usually given back 300,000.
Right, and there, it looks like they're down within their range based on their policy, so between the combination of things, the tax rate's going to have to go up.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can keep it to a minimum.
Which last year it went down.
Yes.
It went down, 30 cents?
Yeah, 30, 32 cents.
Um, go ahead and take, have a quote, go ahead. Don't forget to say your name.
Brendan Meehan, how does the, uh, the homestead exemption affect what the town collects?
The town gets reimbursed 50% of the homestead exemption. So right now, the homestead exemption is 15,000.
Yeah.
So we get reimbursed, the 75, we get reimbursed half that, 7,500, 7,550 from, from the state. So if the, if the amount of the, the amount being reimbursed is going down, so we're no longer going to get 15%, so you're still going to be eligible for your 15,000, but as far as a revenue coming in, it's not going to be reimbursed the same amount.
Okay, thank you.
Old Business, the MMA Action Plan.
So, I actually have a meeting with Lance tomorrow, so fingers crossed on that. Um, he did review the letter from the structural engineer today, um, said he had a couple of concerns with it, but we would discuss those, um, tomorrow. Uh, the only other issue, and I just got this email, I thought maybe you might want to read it, this is regarding the stove. The fire chief sent that over, um, so we need to, that was the other one, we need to figure out how we were going to address.
Did you want to read it out loud?
Do you want me to?
Sure.
All right. So the subject, stove at Town Hall near Assembly Hall, and this is from Chief Steve Johnson. "Good afternoon. Upon looking further into the code reference, the stove just off the assembly area at the Town Hall, it is clear that the stove does have to meet the requirements of NFPA 58, liquefied petroleum gas, NFPA 96, standard for ventilation control and fire protection of commercial cooking operations. Even if this was to be changed to an electric stove, it would still have to meet these codes as well as a NFPA 70 electrical code. The fact that this is a place of, of assembly precludes it from any exemptions. Please feel free to contact me with any additional questions. Thanks, Steve."
So, um, in our further conversation, and the board knows this just happened a little while ago, so I don't have a whole lot more information, but he did mention something to the effect that, so the school is the primary shelter location, that there might be a way that we can set up the Town Hall as a secondary shelter and we might qualify for some different types of grants, um, and just wanted to be able to have more of a conversation with them. So I'll share with Lance what we have to date and, you know, show him the steady working on it and hopefully we'll be able to figure out a little more time until...
Okay.
See if we can find a fix out there.
Um, no mention of the storage room? Are we just forgetting that one?
No, we're not, not until Lance opens the door. I mean, what, you know what I mean?
I'm ready when you guys are. I mean, there's so many different departments storing stuff in there.
So who is it? Now, I'm getting my little calendar out. So, um, we know we want the rec there.
Yep.
Um, and short of the selectmen, I mean, the, the rest is town property in there. Is there any, I think it's primarily rec, I mean, there's some town stuff as far as, um, I don't know, let's just say windows or air conditioners or something, but that's nothing, that's decisions you can make. You think there's another department or is just the rec and stuff?
Uh, well, the library has a few things. I put my air conditioner in there and some light, um, extra carpet tiles and boxes of books.
And I think, I mean, we should just take some money out of petty cash and go buy some totes in just a matter of organizing it.
Maybe shelving.
Some shelving.
Get things off the floor. I think the floor is the biggest concern because...
Right, it's a trip hazard.
Yeah. There's a lot of junk in there too that could be tossed.
Did you want to pick a day that I can try to get the rec here as well?
Sure, um...
I know they generally meet on Thursday nights, I don't know if that works. Do you want to, do you have office hours at the library on Thursdays?
I'm out at 7:00. So, anytime, well, actually, I feel like Saturday before, or Sunday before the dump, the transfer station closes, we're going to need a truck.
So, when do you want to do that?
I don't have, can I get back to you on that?
Yes, yes. Um, so you want just the selectmen and the rec committee present?
Yes.
Perfect.
I mean, possibly Ken, maybe Ken can go through it ahead of time. I feel like he may have some of his tools in there. I'm not positive.
All right, so if we go through our own section, we don't have to be there on that Saturday or Sunday? Deal.
Moving on to bridges, which we...
Yeah, so, yeah, this kind of, I mean, that, you guys gave me the instruction at the beginning of the fiscal year to leave old stuff on, so I don't know if that kind of needs to come off and get moved up top or, I mean, you gave me the deeds to send out, anything else?
Is there something I'm forgetting, Cindy?
Uh, we still don't have the current main, uh, reports on the bridges, the inspections.
The most current.
The most current. Um, I, I think you need those before you can make any real decisions.
I know you forwarded me a report, but it was that, the brand-new bridge that was done over by Balch that didn't, never had any issues and, um...
Right, I forwarded you...
That didn't include...
I forwarded you what I've gotten, remember, and this is, I mean, it's a difficult conversations to have, but, um, you know, so we started having the conversations, you made me, gave me lists of things to do, once we started bringing the road commissioners in, I stopped contacting, I mean, Ben Foster's called me twice, I haven't returned his phone call because I hear the road commissioners telling me, "This is not our job." I hear them last week telling us that, you, you know what I mean, that you've handled it and that I'm not to do anything else, so...
Yeah.
I'm going to step on somebody's toes here somewhere, so unless you give me direct instruction, I don't, I mean, I can call Ben and try to get those reports, but next week, your road guys...
I, we need, yeah, I think we need them at, before next Tuesday if, if we're going to look at the reports.
So should I have them try to get them? I mean, do you think they have them?
We left it in the hands of the road commissioners to get them.
Right, so they need to get them.
So I think we put it back in their hands again and tell them, "Have you got them yet?"
So with email, when I scan that, I'm going to ask them if they have the most up-to-date road?
It seems like they'd email to the town.
They did have 2015 and 2013. I don't know if 2017 has been done yet. We're done in...
Do they do every two years? I was just going to say they do it like every two years?
Yeah, we're done in odd years.
All right.
If it hasn't been done this year, somebody should accompany the inspector.
Yes, if, if, when David Scott get in contact, they have a date for that inspection.
So we're looking for the 13, 15, and 17 bridge reports?
Yep, and if 17 hasn't been done yet, to try to get a date so that, so people, other people can attend it.
The road commissioners should be there, yeah.
I think the road commissioner's normally there.
I know Mr. Winchell mentioned that he was at one.
Yeah, 'cause it's Mr. Winchell. It's his, the bridges are his, these two.
Oh, they're his, okay.
Right, Scott doesn't have any right now, but, right?
We'll see, see you in an email tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to C Maintenance Zoning.
Okay. So we...
We are still moving.
Joe, I feel like I want to sing "Joy to the World." So, yes, so last week, you guys told Mr. Vermette to get some information together. He, the very next morning forwarded me of, um, I'm going to say 10, 12 properties and pictures. Um, we had some storage issues through the server, so I wasn't able to forward those to the CEO, but we printed them off. I also, he also came in today, Greg, and we sent them via cell phones because they were easier to see. So now, everybody's got all the information.
And I just lost what I was going to say, um...
Wednesdays.
So, yeah, Wednesday, so what we've, we were, you know, we talked about, um, Ken not having the time to do his stack that's down there now in addition to the property maintenance, um, issues. So he has found a way to, to fit it in, he'll be using Wednesdays, um, to just do violations, um, complaints and violations only. So walk-ins and phone calls and emails will be turned away for that day and till these violations and complaints have been, um, dealt with. However, in, in our meeting as well, it was discovered that there's, there needs to be, or in the past, there's been a, um, procedure to this in, in order for it to, um...
Hold up in court.
Hold up in court.
If, if it goes to that, there, there are certain steps we have to do.
They want a paper trail. I mean, it's, you know, municipality is all public information, so there needs to be a paper trail.
So in addition to the photos of that list, there's, um, a land use violation citizen's complaint form that needs to be filled out for each, each property, and that would be the beginning of the paper trail. And then, together with the pictures, is when Ken would take, uh, time on the Wednesday to go out and, and visit and...
I think he said he'd start as soon as...
He said tomorrow, that's where he came back.
I thought he said next Wednesday.
I think it's next Wednesday, but he had, he had some things on the books for tomorrow in his normal routine, but he's going to, he wants to be on to this next Wednesday and follow through until, you know, we get, get something resolved here on it, so...
So it would be Mr. ...
So we...
Karen McManus, when Ken would receive the complaint form, how long would he have to act on it? Because if there's nothing in place, I can tell you where mine are, that I've been there those last two years, and they just get filed.
Yeah, I, I kind of felt, I saw this question coming up and I, my answer to that is, this is a new board that's up here working with Ken in, in the complaint, so it's on the agenda.
So would the board then, um, give Ken a certain timeframe to act upon those things? Is my question, because without one, we can file a complaint, but...
That's why we've opened up Wednesdays. He has the time now.
Yeah.
Okay, we've, he has, you know, once this comes in, he's, you know...
I'm sorry, maybe another question that might help here. Do we have any idea how many written complaints he has in hand right now, or let's just say they got these in within the next day or two? Do we know how many he's got that are pending, or do we expect theirs would be top of the list on...
I don't think he, I don't think he said.
'Cause I, that might be a question.
I don't know why 30 is in my head, 31.
That's in my head too.
Is it?
That he already has that many to handle?
Yeah.
So, I mean, in a, in an eight-hour day, I mean, you expect that he would, I mean, she's asking me to put a timeframe on it, I guess.
Well, I mean, you know, where you were talking...
I really don't know, not knowing the job and what it takes. I do know that he said that it takes about an hour to, you know, when he receives this, to go out, look at it, take picture, more pictures if he needed. I guess some of the pictures that Mr. Vermette took are not, he's not able to use for whatever reason.
Yeah, he said he had to use his own town.
Okay.
And I understand what you're saying there, but what I'm kind of saying is that, like, last week you were talking about letters from the lawyer to the property owner. You would then give them 30 days to respond to that letter. So I'm saying if Ken then gets a citizen complaint form, in the alternative hand, does he have a timeframe in which he must respond to that time, to that complaint?
We can find, we can find that out.
We can find it out if there isn't one, we can put one on it.
Mr. Vermette?
Greg Vermette, uh, I've got a shot caller if you need it.
He got the message when we spoke to him earlier.
The pictures don't show everything.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that's why Ken wants to go out too and...
Right.
Different angles and what he needs to...
Yeah, and I don't know if, you know, you people want to go out for a ride. I bring my truck here every time, I've got a motorcycle. I could be driving here on a nice day, but I'm hoping that I hear from somebody, "Yeah, let's go for a ride." And I haven't heard that yet.
Well, I looked at the list, and I've gone, I didn't go with you, but, um, I got the list of, of, you know, all the addresses, so as I've been out for the last four or five days, I've looked, you know. Um, if you were on my road, I'm actually close to my house, I know, I know what you mean and stuff. Milton Mills Road too, so I, you know, I didn't ride with you, but I did have a chance to, you know, look, you know, pay attention.
And what did you think?
Um, it's kind of a hard question, because, uh, at this point, I've had a fire and I have more than my share of unregistered vehicles right now because, um, all my children were burned out of their homes. I've got a camper at my house because that was one of theirs.
That doesn't answer my question, though.
How do I feel? I'm not sure, because now I feel like I'm, I'm on the other side and, um, things need to be, things need to be cleaned up, definitely. There are, we do need to, um, put, put some things in place, but I don't know how far we go. Do you, you know, and I guess we need input with that. I don't, you know, know.
I think that's part of Ken's process that he wants to go through. Once he gets the complaint form and he's got your pictures, he's going to go look and see what, if the complaint falls within our current zoning. And if it, he finds the category there, then he takes it from that point. There may be some of them that he'll go look at and say, "We have no zoning for that," which will be a basis for building our zoning.
Right.
Towards that. So, um, like I, you know, like I said last time, this is, we're not going to let this die. We're going to continue this, we're going to, you know, keep on to it. Ken has been receptive, the fact that he's set a whole day aside during the week to handle this, and he said if someone comes in, he's not going to be talking to, you know, for general...
Right.
Permit-type things. Uh, his, um, his office girl down there, Brenda, he said can handle 90% of the things that would come in for a question. You know, he's going to be in the office working on this stuff, if not out looking at the complaints and taking the pictures and building the case.
Okay. So is he got one generic form he's going to send out?
We got it right here.
We made 16, 16?
I made enough for each one of your addresses.
Yes.
Could I have one of those?
You can have the whole stack.
You can have the whole stack.
Graves for you.
One, that's all for you, it's one complaint per form, so...
Right, you're going to do, yeah, you're going to do a separate one for each paper.
Basically, one address per form.
So we get that filled out and then...
And get it right back to Ken and...
Yeah.
Yeah. As I say, we're going to stay on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Carr.
I decided to leave the Sheriff's Department alone this week, so I have no update.
Okay. Reserve accounts?
So yesterday was the start of our audit, um, so we are looking at, um, scheduling a day that would work with Warren Finance and with Board of Selectmen to discuss any concerns, questions reserving, regarding these reserve accounts that have come up so many times. September 5th, is what I was maybe looking at, it's a Tuesday.
Is that right after, first Tuesday after Labor Day?
Yep. Tuesday, September 5th, if that works for you. I mean, we could do 5:30 and make it just a, an action meeting, you know, or we could do, push it out to 6 o'clock.
5:30 is good.
If that's on a Tuesday?
I'm sorry?
You said it's on a Tuesday?
Yeah, I figured that was the best night for you guys, because you come in anyways.
Anyways, okay.
Is that going to work with our Selectmen's meeting?
That's what I was...
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we do, if we do the Selectmen's meeting at 5:00 and we just do action-only new business items, and we'll just keep the...
I can just kind of condense it.
The agenda as small as we can for that night, in case something comes up. Worst case, it runs late.
All right.
So we're going to invite Warren and Finance, um, and if, I mean, if possible, they are going to, it would be helpful if the questions came in advance. I mean, I've printed off a variety of, of emails and past conversations regarding these fund accounts, and so he has all of that, but if there are other specific areas, um, and I just want to make sure that Warren and Finance and Selectmen know that he will not be prepared to discuss the town audit, that he'll be finishing, probably not, you know what I mean, but just be finishing it, so it takes, you know, 30, 45 days. This is a meeting strictly to answer questions on the reserve and capital accounts that come up every year at town meeting, and so he can show you the legality of them.
Okay.
And get questions answered.
Great.
Personnel policy.
Table from last week.
We had that on the, we did have it on for last week. We, uh, had a couple of things on there we wanted to relook at, which we did. It was sent out via email to us, and I think, um, I'm happy with what we had last week. Oh, the one thing we did want to talk about maybe adding, sorry?
That's okay.
The bereavement side of it. We've did, we did a survey through some other towns in the area, and quite a number of the other towns do have some bereavement time. It's the only thing we don't have in there. We have just straight time off.
Okay.
Uh, we thought maybe adding a couple of days on the bereavement side?
Two days.
Two days?
Two days bereavement for...
Immediate family members.
Immediate family.
Yeah.
And you're going to define immediate family by, as the state defines it, or...
How does, probably what's that, uh, mother, father...
Son, daughter.
Husband, wife, brothers.
Yep.
Yeah.
Domestic partners.
Yeah.
And we did find that the, um, vacation or PTO time accrued was similar to other towns around.
Yeah, that's fair. So I think with adding that...
So two days of bereavement, and that's going to be a, a use or lose, obviously, nothing to move over or anything.
Yes, that doesn't carry forward, yeah, that's.
And you don't accrue
Time on.
Time while on bereavement.
You don't accrue PTO time.
Yep.
So I think with that change.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Too many questions. Is this, this is going to be effective when you guys sign it? So if anybody had to take bereavement leave up until then, myself included, they're not turning over, they're not getting, we're not getting vacation time back for bereavement previously used. So when my ex-brother died, I took three days off, you know, and I can't turn that in now to get my vacation time back, right? That's, it's effective when the.
Yeah, when it's signed to move forward.
Those questions come up, it's an OPO time accrued. And what about, since we're not signing it tonight, did you want to?
Can we sign, can we approve it tonight based on?
No, because I have to, well, I have to redo it and this, everything's going to shift. I mean, you can make a, you can.
Make the recommendation that we sign it based on the changes.
Yep, and were you going to talk about direct deposit?
Yeah, we can make it effective.
Oh, direct deposit.
August 1st, which is what, today?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can make the changes and you can make the motion, we can, you can just pop it and sign it on Friday.
Right, then we don't have to wait another week on it, we can move this forward.
And what about direct deposit? Are you going to put, do you want to put something in there?
I think that would be a good idea too. We had some issues in the past with some of the town employees not cashing their checks in a timely manner. Timely manner being what, three to six months? So it causes an issue this time of year when it comes audit time.
Well, it causes an issue every month with banks reconciliation.
Right, bank statements, but, but mostly audit time though because now you're going to try to explain to the auditor why you have this money sitting out there and why these people haven't paid.
And it's, I mean, it's cost, it's a cost-saving measure too. Because, you know, you take the time to order the checks, to print the checks, to sign the checks, to stuff the checks, to put them in, postage on them.
Yep.
I mean, probably 90% of your employees are probably on direct deposit anyways, but I would imagine.
So just make it mandatory, direct deposit for all employees. I mean, State of Maine does it, federal government does it.
Unless they're unbankable.
Unless they're unbankable.
Yeah, yeah, unless you're unbankable.
I'll make the changes.
You have a question?
Brenda, me and, could you read through those changes again?
Okay, so one of them, so employees shall be at their respective places of work at their appointed starting time. Unscheduled absences must be reported to their immediate supervisor or town administrator if salaried was added in because the salaried town department heads didn't have anywhere to call in. So those lines were, that line was added. Nothing changed there, nothing changed there. Paid time off, this is where the change was. So hourly, the word hourly was added. So it now reads hourly employees accrued paid time off at the following rates. The only change, it used to say after two years. It was data higher to one year, one year, and then it was after two years. And now it's after five years, so you don't get your next step until five years. But the amount of PTO hasn't changed. And then they added a section that says, so that handled the hourly, so now it says salary employees will accrue paid time off based on the hours expected and agreed upon in their position. And it's got the positions listed. So as town clerk, town administrator, I'm expected to work 40 hours and I collect PTO based on that. So if I have an election and I work 45 hours, I'm still getting PTO based on 40. So that was clarification of that. The next change they did was Section G. Employees wishing to take PTO time off must complete the required request for a time off form a minimum of seven days before they request. The Board of Selectmen reserves the right with the input from the department head or town administrator to waive the seven-day period for an unexpected illness. And I believe that was it.
The other section about the bereavement?
Oh, well, I mean, I'm guessing you just heard that.
Okay.
Williams, Nine Sunset Boulevard. On the bereavement, do you have a definition of relatives for whose death?
Yeah, I think that's what I just asked them, their definition of immediate family member.
Is that defined?
It's going to be. They said they were going to follow the state guidelines, so it'll be mother, father, brother, sister, significant other.
Grandparents.
I have to look at the definition.
Exes. But not second, not second cousins, third removed.
No.
It'll be fairly limited.
How about, how about if we use the immediate fa, I mean, if we use the immediate family member definition by the state? I mean, that's going to be the same people that could get a vital record of a death certificate. So it's going to be pretty close. I'll.
I'll make a motion that we approve the.
Personnel.
Personnel. Let me look at my notes.
Personnel policy?
Yes, personnel policy.
With the changes.
With the changes based on what we had spoken about tonight.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Effective August 1st.
Effective August 1st. All in favor? Propane bid.
Is still out until August 20, 23rd? No, yeah, 22nd.
Okay. ACO position.
All right, so I kind of told you guys, filled you in without giving you too much information for the confidentiality, obviously since we're on film. So we met with a few different individuals. I think that after we discussed, you're ready to move forward on a 30-day trial with one of the individuals? And his left-hand man? I'm just glad it's not going to be my phone ringing tonight at midnight. So don't leave without getting sworn in. Because I'm calling dispatch and giving them your number. Because although I enjoy doing a lot of things as town administrator, playing the ACO is not one of them. We have a huge problem on Eagle Road, we're going to talk about after you get sworn in.
Certificate of Appointment, Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Robin Hamm and to Wayne Hamm. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine hereby appoint you, Robin Hamm, Deputy Animal Control Officer, and Wayne Hamm, Animal Control Officer, within and for the Municipality of Acton until September 5th, 2017, given under our hand this first day of August, 2017.
Make a motion, we appoint Wayne Hamm as the Animal Control Officer and Robin Hamm as the Deputy Animal Control Officer.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
No, sorry, careful, can I? So excited.
Haven't you done this before, Robin?
Huh?
I didn't think it was going to be retroactive.
It does, I mean, as soon as I swear I'm in, it's effective, so I won't be calling dispatch on my way home. People know me, my name.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So if we can swear you in and maybe the next day or two, I've got lots of goodies for you.
Oh, is this Wayne?
This is why we've never met Wayne?
That's Wayne.
Wayne, Elise Miller.
Yeah, I'm like, I've never met Wayne, I know who Robin is.
So we'll need to go over some things if you have time, next day or two.
All right, moving on to walkway and library.
Spoke to Mr. Drummy today, he expects to have a number for us next week.
Oh, good. Fire Commission appointments.
All right, so we have, per the ordinance, Robert Dolan, Elise Miller, William Catanze, Norman Lambert, William Williams, Steve Benati, and Harold Smith wasn't interested, we put Jim Bond in his place. So these are their appointments. You know what, I just noticed those were, hold that thought, let me look at the ordinance. I just noticed those are three-year. You can start making the motions.
You did, you did put 2020 on.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I realized that as soon as I. You can make the motions and sign them anyways, we'll just put a line through them and I'll initial them.
Certificate of Appointment, Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Robert Dolan, Jim Bond, Steve Benati, William Williams, Norman Lambert, Elise Miller, William Catanze. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine hereby appoint you as Fire Rescue Commission within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2018.
Sounds right.
Given under our first, our hand this first day of August, 2017.
Make a motion, we appoint Norm Lambert, Bill Catanze, Elise Miller, William Williams, Steve Benati, Jim Bond, and Robert Dolan to the Fire Rescue Commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Can I vote on myself?
I'm staying.
Staying from the one. And while we are signing, we have planning board appointments, oh boy.
So.
Oops, I signed my own.
So this was, we just had to sort things out. So Yoli Gallagher, Gavin Maloney, and Leslie Berlin are already, are all members that were coming due and they're all interested in being reappointed. You had two members that were not being, were not due to be renewed, so they're not on here. Joyce takes the alternate and Lincoln gets moved up to the senior alternate. And I have confirmed this with code enforcement, our oath books, all that good stuff. Those are the three years.
We have a couple.
Yeah, I just want to change the.
To Joyce Bakshi, the Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine hereby appoint you as alternate planning board member within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2020. We can, I'll read them all and we'll vote on them all together. Lincoln Marston, Senior Alternate Planning Board Member until June 30th, 2020. Yoli Gallagher, Planning Board Member until June 30th, 2020. Gavin Maloney, Planning Board Member until June 30th, 2020. Leslie Berlin, Planning Board Member until June 30th, 2020, given under our hand this first day of August, 2017.
Make a motion, we appoint Joyce Baskey, Lincoln Marston, Yoli Gallagher, Gavin, Gavin Maloney, and Leslie Berlin to their, to the Planning Board at their appropriate levels, rather than going down through each one of them.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
For appropriate terms, I guess.
Try Tennis Court.
So we, the REC committee reached out to us, unfortunately, it's been a month, six weeks ago. It's taken that long to kind of get all the parties in the same place. So the REC wants to be able to start using advertising for the town, the Try, the tennis courts. We had to go back and forth between the attorneys to make sure that our insurance coverage, covered people over there. This is the tennis court agreement that was drafted up, approved by all parties. So the board needs to sign that if they agree. And then we had to provide, excuse me, we had to provide insurance to the Try Town. Why is it Try Towns?
Try Town, it is Try Town.
Yeah, okay, so we had to, they wanted a copy of the town's insurance, listed them as a member, so.
I don't know who the third town is, is it Newfield?
I don't even know what the second town is.
It's got to be Shapley.
I don't play tennis. Does anybody play, Try Town, I mean, maybe it says.
We have Try Tennis on here, is it Try Town?
It says Try Town Tennis Association encourages the public to use and enjoy the courts to prescribe as established and agreed upon by the Acton REC. So this is, this is the agreement, it's really, it's between the REC, but I mean essentially as the Selectmen, you are the. Yeah.
So you provided proof of insurance.
So they drafted this contract, they wanted the board to sign. We sent it to our attorney, we then had May Municipal give insurance, our insurance, town insurance covers anybody playing under the REC.
Okay.
Try Town required that.
Okay.
So, if all goes well, we'll be playing tennis tomorrow.
I'm not sure I'm going to read all of this.
The attorney, it says very standard.
Tennis court use agreement, court usage rules it goes over. Fees, required insurance, orientation, combination court equipment setup. And then they have, this is what we're signing?
Yes. Just says organization and to sign at the top, the agreement.
Okay. Is this what, like, the REC is filling out?
Well, you're filling it out on behalf, they don't have the authority to sign.
The only thing we don't know is the requested dates.
Well, you can just put open per REC or somewhere, see REC schedule or something like that, or leave it blank and we'll fill it in.
Oh, I see. So we're going to sign signature of contact person now? This doesn't seem right to me.
Let's sit back.
Seems like the person that's using the court would fill that out.
No. They said they wanted the town to fill it out once. They want a blanket one for the town, all right, so those are the rules. So fees, donating the court time to the Acton REC, required insurance, proof of liability, certificate, certificate holder must be named. Shall be made with the assertion, yeah, they just want a blank agreement from the town, signature of. So just list your, list the board as the first contact and sign as the contact person on behalf of the REC.
Okay. So do we have a motion to sign or do we, no motions?
I'll make a motion, we sign the Try Town Tennis Association's agreement between the Town of Acton and the REC Department and the Try Town Tennis Association.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
While you're signing that, the, I was looking at the, there's some email correspondence between the REC and the insurance, if you want to see them. The REC also reached out to us regarding karate, they want to start offering karate. So the question from Lowry was whether our statement that we have now, the REC form that people fill out when you sign up for baseball and softball, if that covers karate. So we did send that over to May Municipal, they got back to us saying that they would feel, they think that it's time for an annual review of our waiver for all of the sports. So we've sent it over to Berkin Clegg to update that, but looks like they may be able to do karate soon.
Oh, good.
Anything they can do to get their kids involved in something is great.
They used to do it.
Opening it up. To others, what did they used to do?
They had karate years ago.
Did you play?
No, I'm talking little kids played. Drag those little kids.
Oh. They should have like a staff karate day.
There we go.
Okay, Down East Energy Usage.
So the treasurer sent over a form that shows the amount of energy used, not amount of energy, the amount of propane being delivered this last time at the fire department gym, town hall, and transfer station. There's a bit of a concern of maybe some sort of leak or something going on at the fire station, she just want to make sure you're aware of that, of the usage.
Yeah, I did, I did speak with Chief Johnson today and before he even mentioned it, he said maybe we should have an audit done.
So is that something he's going to schedule or do we need to? Is it, do we know who does that or is it free?
I think you can, depending on who you call, you could get it free, but I'm not positive.
Well, we're in the middle of going out to bid for our propane, all right, so we might not call our regular company, they won't.
Oh, okay. I did need to do a follow-up email with the things we discussed about today, so I'll, I'll ask him.
Okay.
If he'll take that on. LRAP.
Local Road Assistance Program. This is a form that Michelle has to fill out every year for reimbursement, it's front and back. It is due today. She was waiting on one of the numbers, but if you want to go over all the pavement numbers that road commissioners provided to her. Oh, we no longer accept faxes.
Road name, San Page Road, funds spent on capital improvements, 21,376. I'm a little unfamiliar with this program, so, so we spend money on a road and we can get a percentage back?
Right, so this is the, the cover letter. So first, sorry for the year's delay caused by late legislation. Secondly, the LRAP allocation for 18 went up slightly. So LRAP payments are now made once a year, not quarterly. As in previous years, all recipients must provide information on how the funds were expended from their previous fiscal year. The information collected on the back of the form is to chart the progress. Although I'm just reading. Please submit the completed form. We no longer accept faxes and it's due August 1st. Oh, they're going to accept an email though. So it looks like the funds go out in November, so they reimburse the certain paving under Local Road Assistance Program, I think is what it stands for.
Okay. So the funds spent below must add up to at least the amount of your fiscal year 17 LRAP payments shown above. So like I said, San Page Road, 21,376. And that was 2,000 feet of road. Acton Ridge Road, 71,807, 2.5 miles. Youngs Ridge Road, 39,927 for 2,600 feet. For a total of 148,603 dollars. And we just sign it, we don't have to do a motion, because it's really no option. Bino application? Is that you?
Elise, have you ever been to the Acton Fair?
We do Bino.
You've never been?
Oh, Bino, is that a game?
It's, oh my lord, Jesus, somebody take her to the fair, all right.
Are you putting a Bino pesticide down outside?
You better just hope, you better hope Lorraine yet isn't not watching this.
Is it, it's like bingo?
Yes, yes. Bino is just like bingo, so every year, they have to come before the board to get, the Selectmen have to sign off of their games of chance application that goes to the town, just saying that there's no ordinances or anything that prevents them. So it's a place on the bat, this is, that's their application form.
Typically, we have two of those, don't we? There was another one last year down there.
Yeah.
Haven't heard from.
Only gotten one.
The undersigned being municipal officer of the Town of Acton hereby certify that we consent to the application to operate Bino Bingo or a game of chance in accordance with provisions. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we sign the agreement.
I'll second that.
Oh, all in favor? Sorry to blame that on you, Robin. What are you putting out there? Driver's license. Driver's license, driver's license?
Driver's license, so, May Municipal, um, I guess we just kinda need to talk about the whole New Hampshire thing, so, May Municipal wants us to do background checks on anybody that, um, gets behind a fire truck or ambulance, so the Fire Chief has provided me with a list of names of people that could be. Unfortunately, as a border state, May Municipal is recommending, or, it's funny, they recommend, but they insist that we do background checks in both Maine and New Hampshire. Uh, through Maine, we have, uh, inform me that we can log on and, and check driver's license records, um, New Hampshire, I'm, I'm just not finding anybody that wants to play nice with us, um, right now, it's ranging from fifteen to twenty-five dollars, and each individual is gonna have to sign a form for me to get a copy of their driver's record.
Wow.
But because they go to Frisbee as often as they go to Biddeford, is, um, they want New Hampshire checks done as well, so, um, depending on how many members, we may need to figure out where we're gonna find that from, so we're gonna have to...
Department budget, sounds good to me.
Well, I'm... Okay, I'll, uh, tell the chief, see if he can find that.
So, that's something, when a new employee comes in as, as well, we'll have to get another form for that.
Typically, they've asked for it, I think, about every year, every couple of years.
And we have checked Maine's, and we use inform me for, you know, most of our locals' background checks and so forth with regular employees, but the whole New Hampshire thing, I guess, I don't know, if they had a situation, or...
Okay.
So...
So, that was an FYI?
It was an FYI.
Okay. Moving on to public comment.
Dennis Long, um, as a new member of the Road Committee, um, do the Selectmen have an agenda or a direction you're looking for the Road Committee to go?
Well, we, well, as a select board, I, you know, we haven't really discussed that other than putting it on hold because of the miscommunication and the misunderstanding of what the Road Committee's agen, um, agenda and job description was, but seeing that we are now, have some things on the plate, such as bridges and turnarounds, I feel like I saw something about turnarounds and easements, I, I, I think the Road Committee could be meeting and, and may, being productive.
Yeah, could, because, I mean, the Road Committee's job is very clear, really, uh, they're an advisory board to the Road Commissioners and the townspeople.
Yep.
At least that's what MMA says. And there is quite a few things that, uh, I feel we owe to the taxpayers of the town, and one thing would be to look at our road ordinance and make it maybe a little, uh, more accessible to some of these people that are on private roads to, um, make it so that the town can take over some of these roads, uh, without people on private roads spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, we, seventy percent of our taxes are better come from these people on private roads, and, uh, that, I think that they've been treated for the last ten or twelve years, anyway, as second-class taxpayers, and I know there's a lot of them that don't feel that they've been able to come to the Selectmen, uh, and the Road Committee hasn't, like you say, really done anything and, and met, and, so I think there's a lot of issues that the Road Committee really could look at and, uh, bring forward to the, the people of the Town of Acton, which hopefully will be a very positive thing.
When you say Advisory Committee, who do you, who do you feel they're advising to?
They're advising the Road Commissioners, uh, I would say the Selectmen, and the taxpayers, those three.
And possibly the Planning Board?
When it comes to ordinances, they work with the Planning Board and, uh, advise them, and they hash out whatever, uh, changes in an ordinance that, you know, they would want.
And how do you guys feel about having the Road Committee convene again?
They've got, you know, they do have some things to, to work on, um, I just caution you on the private roads, the state's pretty clear on what you can and can't do, or what a municipality can and can't do on...
I understand that one hundred percent.
We'll just have to cross that one when we, when we get to it, but...
Uh, but if you check with MMA, and I'm not trying to, uh, the Road Committee has the authority to call a meeting on their own, uh, as well, and I'd much rather that, uh, the Selectmen was part of that, uh, and hopefully, at least one Selectman would be able to come to the Road Committee meetings, uh, and bring to the Road Committee some of their concerns that they have that they think might need to be addressed, and I, I just think we'd be better off to be proactive about a lot of things instead of reactive. I, I think for the board of Selectmen and, and the people in town, I think that we'd all be better off.
Is that how you feel?
We really haven't talked about it, I mean, I mean, it's fine, I mean...
Say what you wanna say.
Well, it would be...
I won't, I won't bite you.
It would be good to get it going, you know, and kinda give you guys a direction, and, um, are you the liaison?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so we do have somebody that's, that will, you know, go and, you know, be there, um, so, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so, do you want the Road Committee to call a meeting, or do you guys wanna set up a meeting, or what do you wanna do?
I think we have the bridge, the bridges, we're still gathering some information on that.
Right.
So, I think once we get that together...
We, we'll, I'm gonna call a meeting soon.
Very soon, I hope.
Very soon, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, like I'd get a look at my calendar.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Good evening, Dick Neal here. The, uh, I've been meaning to get up to see you folks the last few weeks, but it kinda things get a little carried away here, uh, trying to get caught up. I just wanted to thank, uh, the Selectmen, uh, staff, actually the residents of Acton for the wonderful flowers that were for my wife's funeral, and, uh, it was very well appreciated by myself and the family, and, uh, I just wanted to let you know that we really noticed and, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Also, would like to, again, uh, reissue my offer that if any time this, if can offer my services to, uh, you people here at the Town Hall, just give me a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick, and we're, sorry for your loss as well.
Any other public comments? Okay, moving on to announcements. Blood Drive, eight. August eighth.
Good. I had to put something in.
August eighth.
August eighth, at the fire station, yes, and they are giving Acton Fair passes away, so, more the reason to go donate blood, and this is in memory of Mr. Pillsbury.
Okay.
Everybody love Mr. Pillsbury.
Boating class on the twelfth.
Yep, uh, you have to sign up for it in advance, still, the state of Maine doesn't require that you have this, but we've got, we have so many lakes that go in the New Hampshire reciprocity, so, um, it's like five dollars, you can call Mr. Bob Anderson and he'll get you going.
And this is good for both states, right?
Well, only New Hampshire requires it.
Right, Maine doesn't, so...
Maine doesn't, so for now, so, there has been talk that they're gonna start requiring it, but we haven't seen anything yet.
Alright.
Senator Collins offices on the twenty-third.
That's literally for one hour, it's either nine to ten or ten to eleven, if you're interested, um, let me know, it's not a Senator Collins herself, it is a member from her office that's here for one hour, um, they do this every year to just take concerns, or if you have a situation that you can't get, um, resolved, they try to make office visits around the county.
So, it's a Wednesday, either at ten or eleven?
I'm pretty sure it's from ten to eleven.
Okay.
But call ahead if you want to look in.
And the Acton Fair is...
I don't think we could've gotten any more flyers, is my one down there still up?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, so they admitted, this is another one, I gotta just show them off, 'cause these are really nice, they just dropped them off, they've made a lot of changes to the fair this year, they've had, um, a lot of changes in the, um, the positions, um, Mr. Alfred Roberts, who ran the fair for many years, um, has stepped down, uh, Mr. Ridley is, Roger Ridley is the new president, Lynn Wood Dahl, I think, is the vice president, just doing a lot of things, making a lot of changes, and really trying to get out there and do a lot of new things, so, um, even if you haven't been for a while, this is a Fifth Annual Cruisin' Car Show, looks like they have going on on August twenty-fourth, so the fair runs, I think, the twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh, right, Thursday through Sunday. All kinds of cars in here, all kinds of prizes, cash prizes, so we'll advertise those, they literally just brought these to us, and this is the one kind of exciting here, so they're gonna have a truck pull, so they have turned the old, you know, where, um, where the wash rack, the old wash rack is behind that, they're putting a, um, an actual track in there for truck pulls one of the nights, so, kinda neat to watch, as long as everything stays attached, so, truck pull, same things, um, all sites of, all types of prizes and weights, um, this is what this one, this one is just some information on the different bands that they have going on, uh, we've got lots of flyers, and this is the amusement one, so, schedules, all that good stuff, coming up.
Do we know if Mike, Mike Correy has it up on the, uh, MetroCast?
Mike Correy has the prior years playing, um, whether or not he has the actual dates yet, I don't know, he's gonna get a lot of this scanned and emailed to him tomorrow morning, so I'm sure it'll go up soon.
Does he have last year's playing, or is he doing fifteen?
Uh, I'll have to check.
Yeah.
I know that I walked by at some point and saw, I'm gonna say fourteen, um, I think that he kinda spreads it out, but, I don't know, I'll have to look, I'll send you an email, but your goal is to have a sixteen up there, is that what I'm sensing?
Yeah, I think it would be nice to have last year's up there.
And it may be, don't call me, Michael, it might be up there, I'll have to look.
Yep.
Where's the boating class?
Uh, here at the Town Hall.
There's a, there's a flyer hanging in the hall.
It's an all-day event, I'm gonna say it starts at either seven or eight in the morning and it goes right till two or three.
Yeah, I think it goes till two.
You definitely have to sign up in advance, they only have so many seats, it's like five dollars, I think, for the course.
Is that all?
That's all.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Good night.